Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is our first public comment period. If, uh, we'll have another one at the end of the meeting, but if you'd like to come forward, you can do so at this time. You have three minutes. And please state your name and address and give your form to our clerk.
Brian Haney, and it's more of a question about the sign that's going on the Redwine Park from a law firm. Is it an advertisement sign or is it gonna be like some really nice sign that describes the park itself? Or is it gonna be like a flat sign that goes on the fence like you see at baseball?
Is that consent or is that?
It's not consent.
Okay.
Uh, the way it's been described to me is it's a similar sign to what's down at Shamrock Park. It's got the panels that open and shut with plexiglass.
Okay.
So we can put notices in the rules of the courts and.
It seemed like it was advertising the way it is.
Yeah, it'd be more of a, yeah, just informational sign down by the pickleball court.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Make your agenda back.
Wrong piece?
Thank you. Yeah, make sure you fill out the form. Aye.
Hello, I'm Dr. Karen Green. I've lived in River Oaks for the last eighteen years. I've been coming into PC City through Tyrone for twenty-eight years. Um, when I first came driving through, I could not tell where Tyrone was. It wasn't until two thousand sixteen that there was an actual sign to let me know where Tyrone was. And I see that as a problem, especially since I live in one of the most affluent neighborhoods in Tyrone, River Oaks. We pay a lot of the taxes and I wanna know what my taxes are going to because at this point I don't see anything that's coming to benefit me as a Tyrone resident who's been here for eighteen years. Thank you.
Thank you. One else.
Just know they're gone.
They're, they're on the back, so you can just fill it out after you speak. You state your name and address.
My name is John Ross, live in Tyrone, Chad Millane, Southampton. Uh, I was told that we was gonna be pave the streets, do the wraparound. Street with that four-way stop sign. It's supposed to be done this summer. And I'm just trying to figure out what's the holdup on it.
It, it's going to be done. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what timeline. I've never heard gonna be done this summer, but I. Which, which, are you talking about?
You're talking about the roundabout.
Yeah, they came in and, uh, home social media said it's gonna be done this, this summer.
It's never been part of our timeline, but I, I don't know who told you that, but that's not part of our timeline. It is in the design phase. As y'all know, we're getting into the, I'm sorry, we're in the, getting into the property acquisition phase at this point. Um, Philip, do you have any better information than that? Utilities was another thing that we're working on.
Property acquisition. We should have a set of, uh, approvable plans to you, including the right-of-way acquisition plans, probably by the, by the next council meeting. Um, so we'll, we'll have that. That will allow us to basically, uh, go into ninety percent plans and, and start, uh, getting construction bids.
Do y'all still doing, continue to do the golf trails still?
Yes.
Yes, that's a part of the design.
And actually two locations, one at the roundabout, then one coming from Publix.
Okay.
So both of those will come from via Southampton.
So is it gonna be done this year or next year or when?
Um, the roundabout's not gonna be completed this year. We'll probably start on the path connection to Publix this year. Uh, so that'll be, uh, basically following the exit ramp of Highway seventy-four. The roundabout is probably another eighteen to twenty-four months. It's a large project, a very large project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Um, before we approve the agenda, I'm gonna ask you to remove item number eleven. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with item number eleven?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the, uh, elimination of item number eleven.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
The millage rate is our next item. Can we do the, can we do the consentogen?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consentogen?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now the millage rate is our next item. Uh, do you wanna make a brief, either one of you, brief presentation?
Yes, sir. Um, every August we set a millage rate that calculates out the ti- ti- town of Tyrone's share of property taxes that are used for the general fund expenditures for the year. Um, the staff is proposing for the sixteenth year in a row, two point eight eight nine for the millage rate, which will provide an approximate eleven percent of the budget, um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Thank you. Uh, is there, are there any questions for staff? There a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, we approve the millage rate to remain at the two point eight eight nine.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something, please. Um, I, I know this was mentioned last year and, uh, and I brought it up. I, I just feel like it's time for us to at least look at the possibility of putting it back where the money that we are supposed to get, that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we roll it back so that we won't collect that this year. Uh, if you look at the last several years, uh, the percentage adds up to right at fifty percent. And it just seems like it's a lot to ask our citizens to, to pay. Uh, a lot of our citizens are on fixed incomes and I just feel like that the town, if the appraisals had not gone up, we would have made it without any change in our, our millage rate. So I think that we could do this. We can roll it back to whatever we need to do. If it's two point six two six, then we can roll it back and, um, and give our citizens a break this year.
Okay, there any other comments?
I, I, I understand that, but I also know that everything's going up, including what the town has to pay for. So inflation's affecting us as well. So I, I see both sides of it. I, I pay taxes too.
Other comments? We have a motion and a second on the table. If the motion fails, we entertain another one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. All right, next item is, uh, contract with TSW for the schematic for Shamrock Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, little background in history, the twenty-twenty-three SPOSS noted improvements to Shamrock Park consistent with, uh, citizen feedback and concepts in the comp plan and the downtown master plan. Uh, these improvements included landscaping, hardscaping, uh, parking improvements, and the accommodation of a permanent stage slash pavilion for the park. The programming schematic before you this contract will move the park from concept to design to be ready for construction so that we can begin making good on those, um, those designs as visioned in the comp plan and SPOSS. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the contract with TSW uh, for an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, now, it, it wasn't, Philip, just a few years ago that we had some kind of study done the same way.
Yeah, so the, the LCI was a, an entire downtown, um, study. So what that did was it, we had a market analysis that was performed for the town and we had, um, some professional architects and planners hold, um, public meetings where we got citizen feedback on a more specific direction that they wanted for the park and for the downtown area as a whole. So, um, what that plan did not produce was a, a design that could be actually built off of. So that created a concept level that just kind of incorporated citizen feedback of seeing what they would like to see generally in the parks and big picture ideas. This actually gets us into moving that conceptual into, um, an engineering design so that we can, we can actually construct that.
Okay, um, now is, is this the same one that, uh, like on, on, in our, um, our agenda that we got? Is that like the, the A1, like page seventy, is that the part we're talking about, the LCI goal?
Um, so this contract begins on page forty-four of your packet. Um, if I'm not answering.
Can you restate the question, please?
Well, I, I'm just making sure that I'm on the white one.
Here, let me, let me give you this.
Okay, so are, are we on number eight or are we on number nine?
We are on number eight.
Eight, okay. All right, so I think what I'm looking at is number nine. Okay, I'll wait.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is different from the LCI contract. That, um, and, and I apologize, that is a little bit confusing. So we, we, we have, we're gonna be, after the end of this year, we'll have two LCIs, studies done. Um, and so the, this, the next item on the agenda is also a continuation of our previous LCI study. We were awarded a grant to do a second follow-up LCI. And I can, I can explain that one, but this, this, uh, contract before you is different from the one that we're talking about. This contract is for the park. The next item on the agenda is actually very specifically for streets in the downtown area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Well, my problem, my, my error.
Uh, I have one question about it. The, uh, date that they are given is, ends March thirty-first. There are no way for us to get them to finish their scope of work before March thirty-first?
Um, for.
And was that negotiated?
This is for the, the.
For the, for the schematic.
For the schematic.
That's what, in the contract, uh, the date on item number. I think number four. Number four, schedule.
Um, we, so we can, we can negotiate a different date and timeline. We would, we would of course have to bring that back to you, um, if you'd like to approve this at, at a following meeting.
Or can we, can we approve the contract with a request to move it at least up a month? Can we do that, counselor?
Yes, you can. You can have it approval conditioned upon addressing the, uh, the date of the deliverable to be adjusted through negotiation, uh, by some parameters, uh, and give maybe about a thirty-day window for that to occur. Question would be, at this point though, if they say no, are you comfortable with staying in March thirty-first? Because that's part of the range.
That's why I use the word request as opposed to mandate.
Leave the thirty-day window to make that request, what would be if you're not successfully stays at March thirty-first.
Correct. That would be my, my opinion. It speeds it up a little bit. Any other comments, questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we, um, let me get on the right one here, excuse me. Yeah, I make a motion that we, um, approve the contract with TSW for Shamrock Park programming schematic for the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars with the request that we, um, add in a request to, um, have the, uh, finish date thirty days earlier.
To accelerate the finish date, thirty-day window to negotiate the acceleration of the finish date. Maybe you don't get a different date.
Right.
But you wanna stop that negotiation period. Thirty-day window is to make the negotiation period.
Okay, so adding a thirty-day window to negotiate the re-
Acceleration.
The acceleration of the project.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Need more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number nine. Item number nine, aforementioned LCI program.
So, yeah, so this, this is the second item, consideration to approve a sub-grant agreement contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the twenty-twenty-three Livable Centers Initiative Program. So, uh, the town of Tyrone was awarded, um, a one hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission. This LCI study, so Livable Centers Initiative Study, is a continuation of our previous study that delves much deeper into the design of Sonoya Road and downtown streets. So, uh, that's more specifically what this LCI, um, is trying to accomplish. The contract in front of you is an agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission on the terms of how we go about, um, engaging in that grant study, how we are going to, uh, work with exchange of money. So it's a compensation grant, so we'll pay. And then they compensate us for that portion, eighty percent of the study. Um, so it goes into those details.
So Philip, the, the cost of this is the two hundred thousand, but we're getting a grant for a hundred and sixty thousand?
That is correct. Yes, with the, this, this is an eighty percent match grant, so we'll pay forty thousand dollars.
We, out of, we would play out of forty, and where would that forty thousand come out of?
Uh, it comes out of the planning and zoning budget. We have a, uh, a technical services line item that that would come from.
Can you expand a little bit on how this is different from the other?
So, um, the previous LCI, and again, the, the LCI program that's administered by the Atlanta Regional Commission is a part of state funding. And, uh, this trickles down from federal monies that are made available to the, to the individual states for transportation improvements in general. But there's also a focus on downtown and town center areas within communities, improving their livability, walkability, um, just improving the overall kind of economic center of a downtown area. The first LCI program that we did, um, focused on, generally speaking, downtown. So we did a market analysis of where we had gaps in terms of, uh, different industries, real estate, um, things like that. We identified overall concepts of design, what architectural features we want, how we wanna improve the, our ordinance to meet those standards, um, different zoning amendments. So there were a lot of different policy objectives that were noted in that one, uh, previous LCI. And it looked at the town as a whole, downtown, I'm sorry, the downtown area as a whole. This particular LCI study focuses on one aspect of the previous one, which was our streetscape. So what do the streets look like? What kind of right-of-way do we have? Can we improve it with beautification? What specifically can we do to Sonoya Road in different cross-sections, different areas of the road to, um, to improve the, the character of the downtown area? So that's what this one is focusing on. What we will get out of this is a survey of the entirety of Sonoya Road as it exists in the town center downtown area. We will know topography, we'll know right-of-way widths, we'll know where infrastructure is. And for those different areas, exactly what kind of streetscape improvement is feasible. That allows us to move straight into construction, which for the twenty-twenty-three SPOSS, we've actually dedicated monies to work. So this is, again, helping us move towards construction of a streetscape and it really helps us allay, since it's an eighty percent grant, uh, match, uh, that helps us allay those costs as we move towards construction of, uh, improving the downtown streetscape.
But it won't keep us from doing any of the streetscape improvements that we already have on, on schedule to do?
Yeah, so we have a couple that are already on schedule, um, up at the, uh, Gunnin Building and Partners Pizza. So that one's not affected by this.
Good.
Okay, um, so I, I realize that this, uh, work may not have been designated specifically for Tyrone. Um, maybe it was a forum for everybody, but under the number three, the LCI goal, I couldn't help but see that utilized transit.
Yeah, so, um, the Atlanta Regional Commission has overall goals that they ascribe to, you know, the, the LCI program as a region for Atlanta. And so a lot of the, those goals are regional goals. They may not specifically apply to any particular community, um, but multimodal options of, um, offerings within LCI study areas are one of those goals. For Tyrone, the multimodal option is really highlighted on walkability and bikeability. So pedestrian improvements, cycling improvements. And for us, very specifically, we have, you know, of course, golf carts and so accommodating those. Um, but overall, the grant does, the, uh, sub, the sub-grant agreement does talk about the ARC. ARC is just overall goals for the Atlanta region. And so because a lot of communities have transit as a part of their communities, that's, that's what's included in their description of the grant program. But for Tyrone, that won't be applicable.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Or motion?
I make a motion that we approve the sub-grant agreement contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the twenty-twenty-three Livable Centers Initiative Programs for our, um, for the, uh, regarding the lan- streetscaping plan for Sonoya Road.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, item number ten.
Um, yeah, I'll take this one since Bitch isn't here tonight. Um, so this is consideration to approve, um, a purchase for twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet thirty-five hundred HD service truck in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the Public Works Department in the background requested a utility service truck be purchased, um, for the current fiscal, uh, year to haul new heavy equipment and to serve as an emergency response vehicle. Uh, so these service trucks are the ones that have the replacement beds that have, uh, utility cabinets and things on them. So, uh, this is something that our Public Works Department and the guys have been needing. They don't really have a truck that serves that goal. We've purchased new equipment hauling the, uh, skid steer, transporting the jet vac trailer. It's recommended that you not, that those are very heavy, especially if the jet vac is filled. Uh, so we'd need a heavier duty truck to be able to pull that, those heavy, uh, equipment items as well.
Motion?
Uh, Philip, was, was this put out on state contract or was there?
Yeah, so we, uh, this, this price is cheaper than the state contract vehicles that are available, but we did get a quote across three different vehicles and this was the lowest.
And then the cost, uh, this, that's sixty-five thousand, that also includes the body, obviously.
That's correct.
Utility body, but it does not include the emergency lights and all, you know, the, the chevrons and everything on there.
That's correct. We'll, we'll go ahead and get a quote from one forty-fourth and, uh, we'll get approval from you guys for that once we.
Good deal.
All right. There are no other comments. Is there a question or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the purchase of twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet thirty-five hundred HD service truck in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. A second?
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll have number eleven, public comment period is open again. Again, please, uh, fill out a form for us and, uh, you have three minutes. All right, hearing none. Are there any staff comment?
I have a couple of things real quick, sir. Uh, uh, as you noted earlier, there are some, probably ran out of copies. There's some copies in the back of a press release that the DDA put out this week. It's also on social media. There's also information on our website, but, uh, we can finally announce that the Downtown Development Authority has partnered with Neighbor's Restaurant. Uh, it's a new, uh, new restaurant, uh, Chef Collins Woods. He's affiliated with, uh, Zac Brown. He was his executive chef or is his executive chef at, um, Camp Southern Ground. He was also Zac Brown's, uh, personal chef for a long time. Uh, he has built a team and he has won the RFQ for the, uh, fire station property. And so we're getting ready to start, uh, working with him on that. Uh, he will be leasing the space from the DDA. Um, he will be, um, using private fund, a lot of private funds, mostly private funds, to, uh, uh, build it out as a restaurant. It's gonna be an open-air concept with a big roll-up doors, um, a lot of outdoor space. So, uh, we're, we're very excited about that, so happy to announce that. Um, and then we are also working on a soft, we're, working toward a soft opening for September first or second for pickleball. So, uh, we did a final walkthrough, or not a final walkthrough, we did a, we did a walkthrough on Wednesday or Thursday. My days are running, Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm sorry, my days are running together. I think it was Tuesday. Um, there are some punchless items with the pickleball courts themselves are ready to go. So we are just, uh, we're trying to expedite some signage, get the rule signage up and things like that. Um, but, but, uh, we'll make the official announcement early next week. We're targeting September first or second to at least let people start playing pickleball. I know people are excited about that. That's all I have for now.
Any other staff comments? Or any council comments?
Yes, I have one. Um, I'd like to let everyone know that the Friends of the Tyrone Museum will be having a vintage craft and farmer's market this Saturday from ten to two. We have, uh, several vendors there, um, some crafts. It's gonna be very interesting. So if you have, you're out and about, come by. Uh, I know for a fact that we're gonna have free watermelon slices and that's always a, a draw, so be sure you put that on your agenda for Saturday.
Uh, ten to two?
Ten to two, yes, sir.
All right, any other council comments?
I, I just wanna make mention again, just to alert people that, um, September first is, uh, another, our last for this season, first Friday event at Shamrock Park. We are showing a movie for the kids, uh, or for the adults as well, and I think it's, uh, called How to Train Your Dragon. Did I say that right? Eight o'clock it starts, so we welcome all families to come out and bring your chairs and enjoy the evening. And, uh, Founder's Day is coming up, which I believe is the first week, week, weekend in October, right? So, uh, the, 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 the staff and the, uh, committees have worked very, very hard in creating a, a wonderful, um, Founder's Day program that we're gonna have here. We're gonna have a Ferris wheel and all kinds of activities and the theme behind it is carnival. Am I correct? Yes. So, uh, please plan on joining us for that. Uh, they've worked very hard and I think it'll be a good time.
Are we allowed to, uh, announce who the marshal is? The grand marshals of the parade? The, the grand marshals of the parade are the, the Gaddys, the, the ones who have the, the lights on Santa Creek Road. And I don't know if you, you all heard, but one of their barns was struck by lightning this week. And, uh, at least that particular barn, it was a complete loss. Um, they had a lot of, um, almost all of their extension cords were out there. Keep them in your prayers. May the Lord provide replacement for what can be replaced. Um, and so that just came to mind when I realized, uh, who our grand marshal for the parade was.
I, I have, I have, uh, concerns, maybe questions and comment. Philip, I don't understand about that house that's been built behind that house down here on Main Street. And that's the, I mean, I just noticed it this week and it, it concerns me a lot because it's been built on, what, just a little bit above an acre? And there, they did get a permit from the county per you saying so. How did they do that? Is this under the LCI that we have? How, we, I mean, I don't want this, I mean, I guess it's gonna happen, but is it gonna set a precedent? And then there, these, I call them tiny houses. I don't know. You say office up front and a couple's moving in the back?
So, um.
Uh, who's gonna be responsible for the septic tank? When one of the other goes bad and there's nowhere to put another one? This concerns me a lot.
The, the, are you talking about the one that's near Dorothea Redwine Park? Yeah, so.
It's built right behind that white house.
Yeah, they, they applied for an accessory structure, um, so they, you know, every property owner is entitled to apply for an accessory structure, basically like a detached garage. Um, that's what they petitioned to the town, or I'm sorry, that's what their, um, their application was for. Um, every detached structure, um, so accessory structure or garage, um, that's built in the town. We have development regulations on them. Uh, they have to, of course, meet setbacks. They can't be over any septic lines or anything like that. You have to. They have to, of course, meet setbacks. They can't be over any septic lines or anything like that. You have to get environmental health approval for those. And they received environmental health approval for their septic tank. They, the structure did not exceed the size for an accessory structure on a one-acre lot. And in terms of them finishing out portion of the accessory structure, we, town code does allow that, up to 700 square feet. It can't be leased out for profit, but you can build like a mother-in-law suite as a part of a garage and detached structure. I believe that they plan on having a small portion, I don't think 700 square feet of it, but I think they plan on having a small portion finished for an office, and the rest, they stated, would be unfinished for just the storage of tools like a garage. It's, it's a, it's essentially a detached garage is what they, what they petitioned to the town to do.
So, so is the county just showing out all their rooms as far as an acre, a septic tank on one acre?
No, so it's, it's a, it's a one-acre lot. They have a septic tank, and the structure's not conflicting with the septic tank. It's not a house. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's an accessory structure, so it would be considered a, like a detached garage.
Somebody's living in it, and you have to have a septic tank. You have to have something, somewhere to put the septic tank. If it goes bad, I understand the county rules are that you have to have another place for a new septic tank.
And I, so in terms of people living out, I think the owners just plan on using that finished space. I, I, I'm not, but I don't want to speak for them. The intention in terms of their application was to have a finished square footage in the, in the detached garage for like an office or something. And the, the structure, if it does have plumbing or anything like that, it needs to be tied to a septic system. Environmental health approves those if the system is sized to accommodate it, or they ask the owners to increase the size of the septic. So I'm not entirely sure what they did, if the system was already sized to be able to accommodate that extra volume, or if the owners increased the size of their septic tank. It's in the, in the lot, in terms of the lot size, it is, it's permitted. We issue, we issue dozens of permits similar to that across the town.
How do we know that going forward, somebody's not going to move into there? Yeah, they say it's office space, but then, a month from now
Well, they, they can. If, like, if we had, if my parents wanted to move to my lot, I would have the ability to build a structure on my lot up to 700 square feet. So, and, and that's the same thing they're doing.
And it's not considered multifamily, the, the finished space that they at least submitted to the town, the finished space that we've shown was not an independent, well, it didn't have an oven or a full kitchen, and it, it was not a full house, so it didn't, it didn't classify as a secondary home or anything.
Got a bathroom facility in it?
It, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back, I'd have to go back and look at the plans. I'm not sure what
Doesn't matter about the bathrooms, it's the bedrooms. And the ground is what bothers me. If there's room for the first one, and you're either going to tie into this one, or you're going to put a separate one, where is the room for the alternate when it goes bad, if and when it does?
Do environmental health make sure that there's reserve field for every septic system that's installed and that the septic system's sized? I defer to environmental health.
I'm going to the county. I'm going to, I'm going to get to the bottom of this, just so you know. Not right. I don't want to see them popping up everywhere. B, it's a little house in the back of a big, bigger house. You know what I'm saying? I don't know how they do that.
Just like Philip said, though, just to reiterate, by right, depending on your zoning category, you can do that, and we, we do that throughout the town. There's a lot of these structures throughout the town.
Oh, I know. There's a lot of stuff going on in this town that shouldn't be done that have been, well, take, for instance, that little 10 by 12 building, or maybe not even that big over here on Tyrone Road, that that little lady told me she lived in. A playhouse. I used to play in it.
That was, that's not new construction, and you're right, that should not be happening.
I, I mean, but that's
And I believe we dealt with that in code enforcement, didn't we not?
But they let her stay there. They didn't, they didn't tell her to leave or anything. They said it was okay, because it had a bathroom in it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure which code enforcement case we're discussing, but we've had a variety of multifamily complaints about, you know, basically people having a multi, utilizing a multifamily, or their single-family property for multifamily purposes. And we've gone back and forth on a couple of those cases. We notify owners of what the definition is for single-family, what they need to do to come into compliance, and so we, we have that discussion often, and if it's a family member, you know, there are always, you know, single-family zoning allows for a number of unrelated individuals to, you know, stay in a home. It's usually a very low number. But if they're related individuals, so if, you know, you're, if an aunt, or if a cousin, or somebody lives with you, that doesn't, that doesn't count against single-family zoning ordinances, and so we've had a lot of those complaints, and then people have come back and said, well, that, that's, that they're related to me. They're, you know, either a cousin or what have you, and they, they show proof of that, or, or they, they, they state that, and so at the end of the day, you know, there's not much that the town can do from a, you know, criminal prosecution perspective. We can just continue to try and keep up on code enforcement.
Any other council comments? Okay. No need for executive session, sir? Or motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.